Do we want to start? We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Are you gonna try to do it remote?
I could, or Emily can do it. She'd be the next in line.
I have to go.
All right, well, I'm happy to do it from virtual. Let's uh, I don't have a gavel, but I'll pound my remote control to the TV. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM California time, Pacific Standard Time. The special meeting of June 21st, 2022. Ms. Clark, do you want to do a roll call? Is she there?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, flag salute, sure. Place your right, I don't know, can't, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we can do a roll call, yes?
Member Fritner?
Here.
Roger Conian?
Here.
Present.
President Ferguson? And President.
Present. Thank you. Are there any speakers in person? Because we don't have any virtual, correct?
Correct, we have no, we have no virtual speakers, but do we have any in-person speakers? I want to complete a blue card.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes, we have, we will have some blue cards coming shortly.
Okay. It's difficult to see from the angle that the board was shown, so. Sorry if I ask questions that don't. Thank you, Dr. Weisberg.
You're welcome. Okay, so. What? Okay, request to address the board. Our first speaker is Nadra Ostrom. Followed by Carmenita Heliger.
Good evening, everybody, board members, Superintendent Hill, and to our community and admin faculty. My name is Nadra Ostrom and I'm a parent of two in the district. I'm one of the original members on the district's DEI committee. And I'm trying to figure out how to talk in this and read at the same time. So I'm here tonight to talk about the second reading of the local control funding formula and the LCAP plan. And I listened to the last board meeting where you all had the first meet, the first reading. And I was really disappointed to see that it was recommended that our district DI's consultant duties be and fees be cut. I'm speaking about Ms. Stephanie McCoy. I would have actually liked to have seen her role expanded as there's still a lot of work to be done. And it was really disappointing. I see that Mr. Ferguson's not here, but I was really disappointed to hear Mr. Steve Ferguson and Dr. Emily Weisberg paint the consultancy as unsuccessful. It's been one short year. In Burbank Unified, DEI is sort of like Mount Everest. And I don't even think that we're quite at ground level here. And so I feel like she was being held against like a 5,000-foot goal, basically. I've been on the DEI committee from the beginning and we were immediately told how hard and long this work is going to be. Our first consultant, Rena, from CTA, told us that on day one. And she also intentionally brought up how long, what a long way to go that Burbank has. And so we've pointed out that racism exists and we've mentioned that black children are being harmed. And you know, immediately people's senses go, get heightened. And people start coming up with ways to deny or delay this work. And the umbrella becomes bigger. And there are other marginalized communities that want to have their needs met too, and rightly so. However, what happens sometimes is that the people who spoke up first are the ones that end up getting pushed to the back. And I really didn't think that Mr. Ferguson and Dr. Weisberg would be some of the ones pushing back so hard. It's not the oppression Olympics. Everybody should and will have their needs met if we stay the course. Let's not pit our children against each other. We're all allies here. Sometimes we're gonna need to focus on anti-blackness and sometimes we'll focus on other things like LGBTQIA or neurodiversity or whatever community or student needs to be heard and helped. It's not either or with regards to Ms. McCoy. It's yes and. I know that we have a plan for teacher leaders. They have a long way to go though. They have a huge learning curve ahead of them and they have another job. And our entire district hasn't bought into DEI yet. The head of the BTA is not even willing to acknowledge that harm has been done to students. So it would be really dangerous to put all of our eggs in that basket. I know there are teachers who want to do right. But it's not systematic and it's not equitable yet. So let's not take away the scaffold that our students need and have repeatedly asked for. They asked for help. And also, what is the teacher leader gonna do if it's another teacher or even a principal who's engaging in discriminatory behavior? Dr. Weisberg, you expressed concern if Ms. McCoy is the right person or not. And, and you also mentioned that you want to jump ahead to sustaining this work. But there's nothing to sustain yet. We've barely gotten going. I don't even think our district has earned everybody's trust back. So it's not, we're not at a point, I don't think, where we can remove or cut back on the work that Stephanie has done. She's been really successful with her restorative practices. And to get reports that she's successful and then say she's not the right person doesn't make sense to me. It's important to have people that students feel comfortable with. We haven't seen a ton of diversity yet in the new hires, so let's miss, let's let Ms. McCoy continue doing with what has been working. Mr. Ferguson also criticized Ms. McCoy because only 400 people responded to a survey. But this is a district that's been in existence for over 118 years. And we've been doing this work for about two. So I don't think that, and in those years, there was no intention of being inclusive in racism and discrimination. We're tolerated or either ignored. So we cannot make judgments in one-year increments about what is working and what's not working. We should not be concerned with the person who wrote the survey. We should be concerned with why only 400 people responded in the first place. You should be concerned, what has BUSD done to make engagement so low? What you should be saying is that you still have a lot to learn about how stakeholders feel about the district. That statement illustrates that Mr. Ferguson doesn't have a firm appreciation of the level of disengagement fostered by over a century of systematic racism and discrimination. And yes, she's putting out fires because there are fires. That's what you do when there's a fire. If your house was literally burning, you would call a fire person, man or woman. And you wouldn't be mad at that person. You would thank that person for putting the fire out in your house. And then you would say, what caused the fire? Ms. McCoy did not create these problems. She's helped our students and they need help now. They need a lot of help now. She's helped the vulnerable feel protected and loved and she can do more of that. I hope the board and the district takes this into consideration when you're allocating funds. She needs support. She can still help the schools. It's gonna take them a long time to get where they need to be while she continues to support the district. These sites aren't ready yet for DEI response without her support at this time. Thank you.
Carmenita Heliger followed by Polly Stenberg.
Hello, Board and Dr. Hill. I come to you this evening upset.
Yeah, people.
Is that better? I come to you this evening heartbroken and upset. Facts, Dr. Aga Conian started the BUSD DEI committee. Everyone who showed up for years built it to the point where they wanted an expert to take leadership of a district-wide DEI strategy. A specific interview committee came together and agreed to hire the ideal candidate for the job and voted in our current DEI consultant. Last week, Mr. Ferguson, at the one hour and four minute and 55 second mark of last week's Thursday's meeting, he said he probably wouldn't support either proposed consultant position for the 2022-2023 school year. The divisiveness that he spewed needs to stop today. The BIPOC community is standing together against racism. We no longer want his chaos. I'm heartbroken because, Dr. Weisberg, it seems to me that I was bamboozled. You are like the ax that convinced all the trees you were like them because your handle was made out of wood. You always say DEI is your life work, but when given the chance to be the person of action, your choice was to cut down and disrespect a black queer woman. Referring to the consultant position at one hour and one minute and 28 seconds of Thursday's meeting, you stated, "I'm slightly concerned with who that person will be." You told my daughter after traumatizing her at a previous meeting that you had contacted our consultant for help to see your privilege and seeing your privilege. But as usual, you will use a black woman for her expertise, but not willing to pay her for it. Our consultant is a queer black woman. To see a queer man and a woman disrespect her puts on Front Street the anti-blackness that is alive and well. To Mr. Ferguson and Dr. Weisberg, you are displaying negligence and courting chaos. To Mr. Fritner, Dr. Aga Conian, and President Tabit, this consultancy is an coordinator position and it needs to be paid as such. You will not pay 20-plus majority white teachers with stipends while subjugating a queer black woman to compensation so far beneath her work. Find the money to fully fund the consultant position and listen to the community who wants coordinated leadership in our DEI work. Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
Yes, Polly Stenberg, sorry, I said before, but I did. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and our entire BUSD community. For those of them out there who have not met me, my name is Polly Stenberg. My pronouns are she/her. I am a BUSD parent of two. I sit on the Providenceia Elementary School Site Council and have been a member of the DEI Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee for the past two years. Tonight, I need to address you directly, Dr. Weisberg. I first met you near Wittenall Park in Burbank. It was a protest organized by the Burbank Anti-Racist Coalition in response to the horrific and racist murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and so many others. You were running a campaign for school board and promised to be an elected official who would work to substantively address anti-black racism in our schools. You represented that this issue was of the utmost importance to you. This is the moment where we need to safeguard our progress by supporting and reinforcing the DEI consultant position. But you are advocating for its removal. Those of us who supported you in the anti-racist coalition are deeply disappointed. It was physically difficult to watch last Thursday's meeting and absolutely baffling how your perspectives on DEI could be justified. There was a display of disrespect, personal vendetta, and immaturity. When this district committed to hire a DEI consultant, stated goals included providing coordinated support to the teachers and admin who had limited capacity and severely limited training. It was expressed that the district needed a coordinated effort around DEI to create a shared lens, a shared vocabulary of terms, and a shared commitment to anti-racism. One of the primary problems identified was that any work that had been done prior had been piecemeal, too-site-specific, and inconsistent. We needed an equitable district-wide approach and to establish clear policy and protocol in a uniform means of implementation. Quite literally, we needed coordination. The board hired a uniquely qualified person to fill this position and she began to make demonstrable impact in providing immediate and direct support in crisis situations. Situations for which, as Dr. Paramo indicated at Thursday's meeting, admin had no solutions. For you to have suggested at last Thursday's meeting that addressing racism and the considerable volume of racist incidents as a matter of priority is somehow to neglect the issues surrounding the LGBTQ community or neurodivergent students is a completely false and dangerous premise. Identities are not discrete categories. Identities overlap and intersect, and racism is destructive for everyone. Racism is especially dangerous to BIPOC LGBTQ folks who experience marginalization on multiple fronts, whether they are in general ed, special ed, or participating in any school-related programs. Abolishing default white supremacy culture and working with an anti-racist lens is critical to all DEI work. We hired a DEI consultant who has both formal training and lived experience across many identity spectrums rooted within this specific city and school district. Teachers have reiterated that they continuously struggle with feeling stretched thin and have limited capacity. They want district leadership, personnel support, and meaningful training. That you, Dr. Weisberg, would disparage, undermine, and ultimately seek to push out a highly-trained black woman and BUSD alumni from having a leadership role in DEI in this district is absolutely unacceptable. I honestly don't know how you justify this. At last Thursday's meeting, you said, "Yes, in a perfect world, of course, we would have a whole full-time DEI team and it would be magical and there would be unicorns." Your talking went in circles and you landed in an awkward hypocrisy. The perfect world you described is the one you are actively campaigning against. Your invocation of unicorns as if to suggest that achieving anti-racism goals is a fantasy fairy tale is completely unacceptable and an undermining of our district anti-racism statement. There is no compromise on children experiencing racism. It has to end and it will take a coordinated effort by all members of the BUSD school community with the leadership of dedicated personnel. The budget shows that we can fund this work. Offering stipends to teacher leaders should not be at the expense of adequately funding long-term dedicated DEI personnel. Dr. Weisberg, you stated in last Thursday's meeting that after a year of work, I quote, "Do feel that we are in the same place essentially that we were at the beginning of the process." Have you considered for a moment how hurtful that is to the young BIPOC students and families who have been directly benefiting from the presence of the coordinator position? How is it that you strayed so far that you are actively campaigning against the fundamental anti-racist leadership that we so desperately need? You seem to be actively invalidating your own so-called expert recommendations and doing your best to hinder the progress that we continue to make. I have one sentence. Dr. Hill, Dr. Aga Conian, President Tabit, and Mr. Fritner, we are relying on you to use your common sense judgment and leadership to ensure that our DEI consultant position is fully funded. Thank you.
Is that all of our speakers?
Sorry, yeah, last card.
Okay. Responses, starting with you, Matt?
I think that's.
Oh, there's one more? I'm sorry.
We usually just check and see if anyone else.
Ah.
We're not getting any, so.
Okay, superintendent's comment?
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to the speakers this evening. I know there's concerns about what we're budgeting and allocating around DEI. I just want, I'm gonna respond altogether. When we started this work, we did, we did talk about it is a long process and it will take a lot of effort. It's gonna take resources and dedicated resources to do that. I do want to highlight though, when we did create that consultant position, we did create that with one-time funds as a one-year position. We wanted to analyze where we are. We want to see where we can grow. And then we wanted to find out how to make this systemic. And we've had a lot of conversations about that in the DEI committees. And you see in this budget that we're proposing tonight that over $300,000 is still focused on DEI, but we're deepening the work. And we are focusing on our school sites and building capacity of the school sites with the teacher leaders as well as experts that we need with facing history in ourselves. We talked about having experts around mental health. The reason we have a mental health consultant here is when we've talked with Family Services Agency and we talk about racial trauma, they said they don't have that depth and that experience. So they welcome partnering with someone to help us with that. A lot of the comments are specific tonight around the DEI consultant position. And as we shared previously, is one year to do that strategic analysis. Now we're going deeper and you highlighted some of the skillsets we still need. We need that professional development as we develop these leaders. We need to make sure that we have support for Dr. Paramo as well as we're building those school site teams. These diversity, equity, inclusion, and response teams is what we're starting to call them is when we have an incident. We have Dr. Paramo, we have the consultant that can go with us to help them so that when that happens again, they have the skillset and the competency. And that's why we're proposing to continue that work. It is a combination of all of those factors. And so I know we may disagree on whether it's a full-time position or it's a targeted position. My recommendation is doing all the things I just highlighted as well as we have supplemental materials focused in our budget, because I do believe that makes it more systemic. And the more that we can get it closest to the classroom, the school site, we will have better long-term. I appreciate the difference. I know we disagree about whether it should be a full-time position or not. When I worked with the team, we're very specific about the amount of hours we thought that professional development, that capacity building would take. And that's how we're gonna focus on it going forward. Well, that's my recommendation at least. Again, I will continue dialogue. I'll find this isn't a good format to have that dialogue, but I do appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Board member comments? Mr. Fritner, Mr. Dr. Aga Conian?
Yeah, I'll jump in first. Thank you. Thank you to our speakers for coming out. I'll echo a little bit what Dr. Hill just said. First and foremost, that we are still committed to the DEI process. And we are committing in the proposed budget, there is funding committed to, you know, to the DEI initiatives. As he mentioned, at the time that we hired the position last year, it was committed only for a year because there was only, we funded it with one-time funding. It's always a difficult thing to fund any personnel positions with one-time funding because it does leave the possibility that you may not be able to fund that position again in the future. I know I, and I believe the rest of the board remains committed to DEI. I've had a conversation with with all of you previously. It is, as the superintendent said, we're not always going to agree on it. And I'm trying to remain open to conversations, you know, and how to best move forward. The DEI committee will still work. My colleagues are on that committee. All five of us can't be on that. So my colleagues are the board presence on that committee. I still think there will be valuable work that can come from that. I think there were good things that did happen this year. I had Dr. Paramo highlighted some of them at the last meeting. And I think we can build off those and continue moving, moving the process forward. I know it's not going to necessarily be a satisfactory result, but I do, I do want to see us continue moving on this path. As, I'm sorry, I can't remember which of the three to be pointed out. It's not always going to be focused on any one particular group. There's many groups that need to be represented, but we don't want to make this a zero-sum game. We need, we need support for all the underrepresented groups and groups that have not been treated fairly, you know, by systemic issues in the past. treated fairly, you know, by systemic issues in the past. And it will be difficult, and it will be a long process. Nothing with, when you're going through a major change, nothing ever happens that quick. You know, you, you, we, we need to continue working, continue moving forward. And I do believe that's where we will go as a district. We hope we can continue. I know you, it, it's difficult to say I hope you support us, because right now you don't feel like doing that, and I get it. But I do hope we can at least continue the dialogues and discussions to keep, to working with you and with the community in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you. I'm standing, I'm standing with what I said two meetings ago. I said, we need to find the money. And the reason, I'll tell you why, because to me, just based on experience, what I'm dealing with at work, this is an issue that no money can relieve at this point. And we're just getting started. Second one is that I'm afraid that if we do this in a part time, then we're gonna end up paying overtime, because we're gonna need this person expertise all the time. This is a lengthy process, and everyone keeps saying it. But to me, it's more than that. I think one of the reasons are we had such a low turnout, as far as I'm concerned, is because we have not been talking about this issue. Not everyone is an expert. And you know, being an expert to me, it's not only about what you've learned and what the studies are out there. It's about creating a culture when you feel comfortable. And if you had not experienced racism yourself firsthand, it's difficult to understand. Sometimes, one of the byproducts of racism is that people are afraid to come forward and speak about issues that concerns them. It takes time. I hope that we find the money. We need this, or else I'm afraid that A, you're gonna go overtime, or B, we might lose this person. There is a shortage of individuals who really understand and have the expertise in this area, but also are from the area themselves. That's a big plus that no one talks about. For her to grow up here, that's a big plus. And I think our work is getting started, and and I hope that we've somehow find the money. This is something that's needed. And in order for it to be successful, it has to be permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian. Dr. Weisberg?
Thanks. Thank you to everybody who came to speak. I have a couple of things to say. As I always say, I was taking notes. I wasn't doing anything else. That's what you saw me doing. Um. My hope would be that there's room in the narrative for us to share a goal and not always agree on the way to get there. Over the past couple of years, there have been moments where you have been really angry at me and said lots of things. And that's okay, right? You can, you can call me what you want, and you can believe about me what you want, and that's well within your rights. It doesn't change my commitment to supporting Destiny, to supporting all of the students in BUSD in every possible way that I can. And as much as I wish it could be just about one student or 10 students, we have 15,000 students. And so as I think about what my learning and listening has shown me over the past couple of years, what it tells me is we need to be doing more. The success of DEI in BUSD isn't on the shoulders of any one person. It can't just be on Stephanie's shoulders. It can't just be on Dr. Paramo's shoulders. It can't just be on any one of our shoulders. And so when we talk about, as a board and as a governing board, how to create a sustainable model, that includes finding ways to deepen that work. And we've talked about it since, you know, to Dr. Hill's point from jobs, that we, the goal had always been to empower teacher leaders with continued support, and this model is continued support from Ms. McCoy. I'm sorry that the interpretation was that I was denigrating her or to Ms. Stenberg's personal vendetta. I don't understand what that means. Perhaps we can have a conversation about that. There is an enormous amount about Ms. McCoy that I think is exceptional, and she and I have had consistent conversations about areas of success and areas of growth. It's really easy to come up and say, you know, the sort of, how dare you, but there's also into Dr. Aga Khanian, doesn't attend subcommittee meetings, he has not been as invested and involved in the past year and a half. So it's very easy to sit here and say, we need a full time person, and we need this, and we need this, and this is what I want. But there's been no in-depth constant participation. And I'm sorry to have to say that to you, but it's true. So it is true.
I missed one.
Armon, I don't wanna get into this, Dr. Aga Khanian, but I will state again that your lack of consistent communication allows you the freedom to try to earn reelection by agreeing with people who come to meetings and not the reality of what our district means. And it is deeply disappointing that you would allow that to take precedent over supporting your colleagues. I will additionally say, and, and this is for what it is, but Ms. Stenberg, I was doing those protests with Africa long before you and I had a chance to meet. So the implication that I was doing it in order to get elected is deeply hurtful to me and also untrue. Again, I know that we have had many moments where you don't disagree, that you don't agree with the stance that we take, but I firmly believe that the only way to continue to deepen the work that we're doing is by expanding out, allowing Ms. McCoy to do the phenomenal professional development work she's been doing with our teacher leaders. To Ms. Ostrom's point, you're right, our teacher leaders continue to need on the ground, consistent sustained support. And that's what I'm excited for Ms. McCoy to continue to do. But we have to allow our teachers to begin to build relationships and the ability to deal with the very specific and unique needs that our 21 campuses have. What, what Burroughs needs is not what Burbank High needs, it's not what Monterey needs. We all know that. Everybody in this room knows that. And there's no way that Ms. McCoy or any one person can do that by themselves. So when I talk about us being in the same place, that's not meant to disparage anybody who's been doing the work, but rather to call ourselves to task and say, what do we need to be doing differently, better, more deeply than we have been before? That's not a knock against Ms. McCoy. That's a knock against us. I don't think that we've made the progress that we need to make. And if we haven't, then we need to be thinking about how we can do things differently and better and provide different and more meaningful support. No one, or at least me, I'm not interested in playing victim Olympics in any stretch of the imagination, but I am committed to making sure that multiple student groups are heard and supported, and that includes our BIPOC students. But it also includes other students as well. And we've had parents and students come forward over the last year and a half and talk about needing that too, and that's important to honor. So again, I was not saying, I'll say this, I am excited and hopeful that Ms. McCoy will stay and be part of continuing this work and do the phenomenal work she has been doing to help our teacher leaders grow and expand. I'm excited about the possibility of making this work more meaningful, more sustainable, and, and deeper by allowing our teacher leaders to really invest. I'm excited about the Student Advisory Council that we'll be working on to allow students to have a more active and strong voice in this process. No one is interested in cutting back. No one is interested in going backwards. It's clear that there's a lack of faith, at least in my commitment, and that's well within your rights. It's not gonna change the work that I do, the commitment that I have, and the fights that I'm gonna, you know, the, the work that I'll do every single day for our students and our faculty and our staff to make sure that DEI is not just a catchphrase, but that it is infused into every aspect of our district. And again, we may not get there in the way that you like, and, and again, you are welcome to attack and diminish, and that's okay. That's well within your right. But I believe in the work that we're doing. I believe in the way that we're getting there. I believe in our commitment to making sure that this doesn't just stop. I don't believe, based on the budget and based on the conversations that I've had, that, that at this point right now, there's a way to have a fully funded DEI coordinator. Doesn't seem like that's possible, but what does seem possible is what we have in the budget that we've laid out. So again, no one is, we're not trying to get rid of anyone. We're trying to deepen support and make this work more meaningful moving forward. I appreciate everyone coming and expressing themselves, and I look forward to more difficult but important conversations.
That's all, Shar, sorry.
President Tabit, you're on mute.
Gosh, you all missed the amazing things I had to say. I'm sorry about that. Are you, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers who came out tonight. I think about my own growth and change over the last year. I, I voted against spending any kind of money on a DEI coordinator. And now, a year later, how wrong I was. I, I think that that there is much growth still to come for the adults on our campuses, because I think that's where it begins. And I know a lot of work has been done over the course of the year, and I think there's a lot more work still to do. And I was really I don't, I don't know what the word is, not happy, but impressed, okay, with the plan of Dr. Hill's to utilize the coordinator to continue that, you know, the education, the growth of our adults on our campuses. And I know we've heard from lots of elected officials above us about the state budget and that there's probably lots of one time money coming down. And so hopefully, as we learn about that, that money and that budget, that some of that could be used to increase the budget for the DEI work that we're doing, whether it be the coordinator or some other means. So something to think about as we go forward. But tonight, we're not voting on the coordinator, but we're voting on a budget. So we need to keep that in mind also, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to work through the comments and the feelings of the the folks who came tonight to speak on behalf of DEI and the coordinator going forward. So that's all I have. I don't have an agenda in front of me, Dr. Hill. I don't know that, I couldn't find any of my emails, but after this, we have a presentation, I imagine.
Yes, we, we can open up the public hearing. So there's a, or do you want to, Ms. Cuck, do you want to do the reports to the board first? That probably makes sense. Oh, so we're three, do you, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to do this, or Mr. Fritner?
Yeah, I'll, Dr. Weisberg stepped out for a moment, so I'll just go ahead. The, next on the agenda is reports to the board, item 3A, report on temporary interfund cash borrowing for 2022-23.
Good evening, board members, community and staff. This report is on temporary interfund borrowing. So this is just one tool in our two tool chest to address short term borrowing needs and address cash flow issues. So this allows us to borrow up to 75% of the fund balance in four different funds that we have on our books, the Adult Education Fund, the Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Facilities, and the Special Reserve for Capital Outlay. So this, again, is just a tool in the tool chest, along with trans, and the next item that we talking about to cover any short term cash decisions that we need assistance with.
Okay.
Any question? Did you want me to jump in, Shar?
Yeah, please, go ahead, because it's hard without.
Any questions on that? I don't believe so. So we can move on to item 3B, report on authorizing temporary transfers from the School Pools Fund maintained by the Los Angeles, excuse me, Los Angeles County Treasurer, 2022-23.
So this item, should you choose to vote for it tonight, would allow us to borrow not more than 85% of the anticipated revenues to the school district, and that, again, is another tool in our chest to address any cash shortages that we have. It's a last resort, so we have, we'll have to have exhausted all the other options that we have. And this is a repeat item from last year, so we're just being cautious and putting it in there just in case we need it.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Cuck. I, I was gonna say it as well for the community, but these are things that we do every year just to keep things flowing at the end of the, at the end of the term.
Correct.
Just in case it's needed. Any, if there's no other questions or discussion? And I don't see any, so then we can move on to for A, the public hearing. Public hearing on the temporary interfund cash borrowing resolution for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Are we doing both of them as one public hearing? Okay, oh, there was, oh, 4A is the only, all right, we are opening the public hearing on item 4A. Do we have any public comments, anyone? And we're seeing none, so we can then close the public hearing and move on to item 4A. Or that, that was the public hearing on now 4B, the public, this, this is a separate public hearing, because we'll open the public hearing on the temporary transfers from the School Pools Fund maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurer for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Would anyone like to comment on that? Seeing none, we can now close the comment period on that, on item 4B also. You want to?
Steve, I have an agenda now, if you want me to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we're at five new and or unfinished.
Correct.
So 5A, adoption of resolution 49, authorizing temporary interfund cash borrowing, 2022-2023. I need a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Man, I'm president. I move that the Board of Education adopt resolution 49, authorizing temporary interfund cash borrowing transfers up to 75% of the fund balances of the district for 2022-2023, payment obligations as permitted in Education Code or 2603.1 as presented.
I can.
Thank you for the motion. And the second, Dr. Aga Khanian, any discussion?
And this is just what was, what you kind of presented to us, so.
Right. You'll have to speak.
Do you need any discussion, Dr. Weisberg, since you are out of?
No.
But these were fairly standard and things we do every year, so.
Indeed, sir.
All those in favor?
There's any further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Fritner. All those then in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Moving on to 5B, adoption of resolution 50, authorizing temporary transfers from the School Pools Fund maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurer, 2022-2023.
President Tabit?
Dr. Weisberg?
I move that we adopt resolution 50, authorizing temporary transfers from the School Pools Funds maintained by the Los Angeles County Treasurer, 2022-2023.
I can.
Just one pool. Yes.
This is plural. It says pools.
Does say pools.
Oh, mine says.
In what's written?
In the.
Pool, not pools.
Ms. Cuck confirmed it's just one. It does say pools, but it's just a pool.
It's funny, in the report, the link, it says pool. So that's what I was reading. My apologies. I mean, I was just trying to be funny anyway. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Resolution, sorry, second, 5C, second reading and approval of the 2022-2023 Burbank Unified School District Local Control Funding Formula and Local Control and Accountability Plan.
President Tabit?
Dr. Weisberg?
I move that we approve the second reading and approval of the 2022-2023 Burbank Unified School District Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF, and Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP.
I can.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Weisberg. Dr. Knappick, I see we have a presentation, a discussion?
Yes. Good evening, Board President Tabit, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, Senior Leadership, and the Burbank School Community- Senior Leadership and the Burbank School Community. Last Thursday, we presented the LCAP, and part of that presentation, we had a request from the board to come back and share with us a description of the DEI items. And we provided a one-page summary of the DEI items that we have a print copy handout here in the boardroom. And then the board members were also provided with a print copy too, and we're also displaying it on the projector and on the website for the board meeting. So I wanted to just quickly run down through a couple of the items that we have here. So one of the action items we have in the LCAP plan is where the DEI site lead stipends. And so we would like to go ahead and fund forty-four leads at three thousand one hundred and two dollars each for an annual stipend. And these people will be supporting the implementation, I should say, these are teachers, by the way. Teacher leads will be supporting the implementation of Facing History and other DEI works as, as we work with the school sites and work across the district on DEI. So they'll be carrying out some of the responsibilities to our staff and our families too, or some of the actions. So they'll be providing professional development. We are also going to be having them work with some student groups as part of their DEI work too. So we're building capacity across the district with these forty-four leaders across the district approximately. And they'll be working with our DEI consultant too, that we'll just talk about in just a minute. We have DEI site lead collaboration as another action item. So each month, we plan to gather with, under the leadership of our consultant and along with principals and site lead collaboration meetings, although you're going, having conversations and learnings about DEI work and having professional development at the site level. So once again, it's about four hours per month for about ten months for a total of sixty-one thousand dollars. We have the DEI consultant position, and the DEI consultant position will be working on professional development, working with our leads, working with school site teams, working with our principals, our administrators, our at-risk intervention specialists, our counselors. And once again, our teacher leads and carrying out all the work in relationship to DEI. Once again, building capacity being led by our DEI consultant. We have the Facing History Initiative that we're going to be continuing into twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And there's a presentation that's going to be done at the pre-service week, that week of August eighth for all of our staff members across our district. And also part of the work too is developing our facing history facilitators or our site leads will be providing conversations and leading the work at the school sites too in relationship to Facing History. We have the DEI Mental Health Consultancy contract that will be funding through the LCAP funds. And this individual will be working with our counselors, our administrators, our at-risk intervention specialists, our teacher leads and carrying out the work from a mental health point of view in relation to DEI. And then we have the last item there, the DEI supplemental materials that we're going to be funding towards the DEI project.
I have a couple of questions. And these may be more Dr. Hill questions, but I'm gonna ask them, we'll see. So for the forty-four teacher leaders, I know we have some teachers that have already been doing the work, but I do want to revisit how we're selecting those teacher leaders to make sure that it's an authentic representation of, of teachers who are doing the work. We know that some teachers have been doing the work and maybe weren't able to participate in Facing History because they had too much on their schedules. I really want us to be able to be clear about how we're selecting them. That it's not just a decision made solely by BTA, but that it's also something that Dr. Paramo and whoever else is involved in, so that we really do have, obviously, as many of our, yes, exactly, Dr. Paramo. A question about, is the Facing History professional development that's going to be coming up in the coming year going to be in person or still virtual? Do we know?
Let me follow up, but it's, the part of the reason we did it virtually was that we could do everyone on the same day as during the pre-service day. So I do believe that the teachers will be in person, but they will facilitate virtually so that we can have all the teachers on that day.
Okay. And then did we get sense that, we may have, the feedback that the that people gave us in regards to Facing History? So that we can get a sense of how effective or ineffective it was for them? I, I, you may have sent it to me.
Let me, I'll, I'll make sure it gets to you, to y'all.
Okay. Two more quick questions. So the supplemental materials we're talking about, that right now is going to be focused on elementary, right? The, the libraries, that's where that, and so if that, let's say hypothetically, hopefully, that stays in the budget moving forward, will then it move to like secondary libraries or that's sort of the assumption of where the money will go?
Well, each year, we're doing assessment of where the needs are, and we'll come back to the board with that prioritization.
Awesome.
This year, elementary libraries was the top, top need.
The last question I have, and again, sorry, because I don't think this is specifically budgetary, but as far as our teacher, as our site leads, how are we, and maybe we haven't even ironed this out yet, but like, obviously, the need to have reporting out, ideally some pre and post, so like formative and summative evals, so that we can see how it's going and that we're meeting the needs of the specific learner and teacher population. I just think having that in place too, so that, again, like we did this year, we can make sure that this model is doing what we want it to do. And if it's not, we got to revisit it again. But this, I appreciate this being broken down. This is really, really helpful. I think it would also really be helpful too for the consultant, because I know that this year, Ms. McCoy has done so much sort of like at the request of the principals and the schools when things have come up. I don't know specifically, I don't know if other board members do, like what those issues have been when they've arisen. It would be really helpful to know, like if the consultant is getting called to boroughs ten times and has only gone to Burbank High once, that tells us a story that we need to be looking into. So maybe we need to be providing more support. So I think it's just a little more information about the work that's being done. It's already being done, but it would just be helpful as we move forward in future years as, as to how we allocate. That's all I got. Thank you.
I have some questions. So my concern is a everything you're putting out here, just the teachers and the DEI sites and the leads, just coordinating that, that's a full-time position. We also are forgetting about all the PTAs. All the schools have their own also, some of them have their own EI committees now. Who's going to coordinate that? And now you're going to make sure that they're gonna be on the same, you know, wavelength or the same conversation with the principals and the teachers. You know, you can see why I'm going with this. This is going to add additional work. And again, to me, just experiencing what I'm currently experiencing and what we're doing at a college that's similar in terms of employee numbers, it's a full-time position. We're, we're going to be having this conversation again in a couple of months again. Because everything here, as wonderful as it is, it's going to grow. But also, I don't want to leave out the parents. I don't want to leave out the schools that have created their own DEI committees from the PTAs. That's going to require coordination as well. I think we keep talking about communications being a challenge in our district. Well, you're going to need someone who knows how to communicate properly. And again, that's to me, it's something that we should talk about first before we moved in, move into some of this other area.
What other areas?
You know, getting the stipends out. And my question is, how flexible is this? Let's say we put out forty-four stipends and only thirty teachers apply. And what do we do with the rest of the money?
Dr. Aga Khanian, can, can I ask why this has been a discussion for a year?
Yeah.
Why these weren't questions that you raised a year ago or halfway through the year, and why now this is an issue for you?
An issue, it's a learning, it's a learning curve that now I've learned more about it, because as I said it before, as person who's been discriminated against regularly, again, this is an area that I'm not the expert in.
Of course you're not, nor am I, nor any of us.
So, but now I have learned, dealing with my other job, that it's a much more complex process. It does require full-time. We're thinking about hiring multiply people to do this. Because if we're going to address this properly, I think we need to change the order a little. And I think, to me, this is not just about race. It is about mental health. It is about, you know, discrimination is discrimination. But to me, I also don't want all this hard work you know, fall sideways because we didn't communicate properly, we didn't coordinate properly. And I think coordination is the key. And it's a challenge that many districts like ours face. And I think we always talk about this.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So, knowing that the funds that we had this year were one-time funds, right?
Yeah.
And knowing that no one person, no matter how phenomenal they are, right? It's not about can, can oversee all of this. Twenty-one school sites, all of that, right? Like, that's not feasible. And knowing that all of the data and research shows that a holistic approach to DEI is significantly more effective when you have teacher leaders embedded, right? We know that from myriad amounts of information. So then how do you envision making it more informed, more collaborative, more meaningful if you were to remove, let's say, like some of the teacher leaders and instead create a coordinator position that we might not be able to fund next year but could fund this year? So I'm just trying to better understand why you think that that model is a model that is going to be more helpful in, in deepening our work, because I'm, I'm just not seeing it.
Because I believe that we're just getting started. And I think with the teachers, I understand that, you know, it is something, and I agree with all of you here, it is something that we need, but at the same time, and what I'm seeing is, the biggest challenge I'm seeing, at least out there is the coordination factor. The teachers are already busy enough, you know, with their work and what they're required to do as part of their job. All you need is one of them not to communicate properly, because they feel like there is no support system. And then one, and one student will fall to the brat. One case will not be heard.
Don't you think that a teacher leader would better be able to work with intervention specialists and the onsite, like, like you said, you brought up a great point about PTA and the DEI committees and the PTA. It feels like, and maybe I'm wrong, that having the, and part of the reason that I think we've talked so much about stipending our teachers is because of all the things you just said. They have a million things, they're doing a million things. They're doing this work anyway. We want to give them the space. Again, so if you look at that second line, the, the site lead collaboration. So time to collaborate, receive training, plan for professional development for the site. So to me, that really speaks to your concern of who is at each site, who really is working on communication, collaborating, making sure that each school site is getting what they need in partnership with the consultant who is going to be there to support them for their needs, right? So like you said, if there's a specific student whose needs maybe aren't being met, and they're not sure how to do that, then having this consultant there to support that feels to me, and again, like, I'm open, but feels to me like a model that is sustainable, also leaves room for growth and allows each school site to address their needs for, in all the ways, like in my mind, that the, the, the site lead will also will be doing those things in partnership with the consultant and Dr. Paramo and, and the district at large.
I agree with you, but the reason I say this is, and I don't even like the term consultant.
What do you like?
This should be a permanent position.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you about that. I think it's, I, I don't think anyone disagrees that we shouldn't have a permanent position. I think what we're talking about is what's like a sustainable, permanent position. And also, how do we build, to Dr. Knappick's point, how do we build capacity? Because no one, and you know this from, from where you work, no one person can do this by themselves.
Yes, but I think it's, even at my work, it's also creating a sense of urgency. And to me, this consultant, whatever you want to call it, to answer your question earlier, what I've learned is that's the glue that keeps this together.
That's why we have it.
Well, yes, but it's you know, sometimes you get cracks when you don't use the proper amount of glue to keep it together. And I've seen this happen already with people saying, well, we'll have the person, they're going to come in, and then all of a sudden, you start seeing cracks. By cracks, I mean students who, they feel like, at the beginning, they were okay, but eventually they realize their voice is not being heard, parents who are coming forward.
Sure.
And then all you need to add is one shooting and one incident, and then what happens?
But that's why you have forty-four people to help keep that glue together.
I understand, but those forty-four teachers are also, they have teaching job to do. This is part of the training. And again, you know, if we're looking at this just for the funds this year and next year, we don't know how we're going to do this, I think we shouldn't even have this conversation, because this is a lengthy process. It's something that we've embedded already. We've put out a language out there about what we stand for. I believe in what we stand for. If we need to go find some additional funding, as President Tabit said, coming our way, we should. I think to me, it's important to prioritize how this is going to work.
Of course.
And to me, what I've learned is it's about communication, coordination, and within that, the training itself also will need the coordination, the feedback. I don't, you know, it is important for all of these locations to happen and all the action items to happen. But I still believe that this requires person that's going to be fully dedicated. And, and, and if we have to look at what's coming our way in terms of funding to increase this, I'm fully supportive of it. I just know that the way, if we implement all of this, we're going to ask for this person to work overtime. We're going to ask them to. Because if we do every other factor properly here, you're going to need someone full-time to coordinate all of it. If not, then, you know, then let's just go part-time in each of these if we want to, cut them in half.
Well, if I may, I think based on what the vision that you had, yes, but I have not seen that vision be successful in any school district. School districts over the last eight years have hired one position or three positions, created a DEI office, and in three to five years, they eliminated it. And what we've been talking about is building systemic structures and processes, policy changes. When you want to make sure that there's no cracks, you'd have to make sure everyone in the system believes in this. And this has started with the board level. Strong board statement, strong board commitment, we've been building capacity, each of the supervisors. So you have Dr. Knappick, Dr. Paramo, talking about these conversations with principals, continuing to make sure that they're supportive, they're raising issues, collaborating with the PTA, they've now created a position that coordinates this work. You get it started with a dedicated position like we did this year, but to make sure that it's lasting beyond anybody sitting in any chair, it's the systems and the structures, it's embedded in everybody's job. DEI, DEI is not an add-on, it's not one person's job. Otherwise, everyone looks. It's like, who's that person? Where do I find them?
Right.
And when there's a budget cut, and we know it's a budget, this is only one-time funding. So I respect your opinion. Yeah, we would have to pay overtime. We'd have to hire probably fifty people to do what you're envisioning there. But to do this well, it's really about being very clear about the work, getting technical expertise, which we have, and that's why we have consultants supporting us internally and externally to do this work. So the vision I have is making sure that everyone is being supported. They have that. It's targeted professional development. When there's issues, we deploy that. The supervisors embed that in the work, so it's constant conversations. One person can't do that.
Again, I'm not asking, I don't think you guys are hearing me right. I'm not asking for the one person to be responsible. What I'm asking for, and I don't want to compare us to other districts, we're talking about Burbank here, people. This is a city that, you know, we're just scratching the surface when it comes to the issues. We just passed a policy regarding sundown rules here. I mean, again, to me, it's, it's something that takes time. Maybe some districts have started this, the conversation has been there. The conversation hasn't really been in our district for years. And if I start even with my own community, I will ask for two other positions if we really need to address this concern. I think what's important to me is that if we're going to approach this in a holistic, we need to find, you know, center where all of individuals have concerns and questions can go to. But it's not so much about also training to me. It's about creating that environment. And that's very difficult. You can train people all day long, but if they don't feel safe, and if they don't feel like, you know, they belong, if they feel like they're, they're just doing this training just to do training, then that's challenging. And that's been challenging in some other districts. And some colleges as well.
Dr. Aga Khanian, but I think that's exactly what Dr. Hill just said, right? Like, we all know that it takes an enormous amount of time. And at least for looking at this, this is about a long-term investment, right? This is about embedding it and recognizing how much work needs to be done as opposed to like a quick fix, which we, which we know isn't possible.
I'm not asking for a quick fix, again.
I know you're not.
You're thinking long-term, then invest in the long-term.
That's what.
We're right at the beginning of this. And again, We're right at the beginning of this, and again.
Armon, I would encourage you, and I'm happy to send you, if you'd like to see um a lot of the data that highlights what Dr. Hill was talking about in regards to effective models, because what you're suggesting, while I understand the intention behind it, does not work if we're talking about what you want, and I agree with what you want, which is a long-term holistic cultural change within the district, right? It has to involve everybody on every level. And if we're not invested in doing that work, it's not gonna stick around. We want it to be around long after we're gone, right? And if we don't do this kind of work, it won't be.
I understand, but we're at the crucial state.
I know.
We're at the beginning of this, again.
But again, you know what it comes down to also, Dr. Aga Khanian, is we have a a very tight budget. And so increasing, or I guess you could move from within this, but before we get to that, I have a question of you, Dr. Hill. On the mental health consultant, is that a donation to FSA to provide us one? Or are we looking for a mental health consultant on our own?
We had conversations this year with FSA about, do they have expertise around racial trauma or mental health? And they said, no, they they could introduce us to individuals. We we do have a couple proposals that we received this year, but we didn't move forward on it, because we didn't feel like we were at that phase. So we would reach out and find someone that has this specific expertise.
Okay. And if we couldn't find someone in a timely manner for this school year, then those, that funding could be split up amongst the other areas? Or does it go back into the general fund?
Yeah, the funding can be reallocated. Um, the total amount is what fits our budget, so the total amount of the three oh seven, seven eighty-eight for all of these items, that's the total amount we have available, but if we need to move between line items, that would, that's something we could do. I I will say, we do have proposals, and there are experts out there, so I I don't, I don't think they'd be challenged.
Okay, good, good, all right, well. Any further discussion, or can we move forward? Did you have something to say, Mr. Fritner?
Uh, just in regards to the last comment, I don't think but we we shouldn't reallocate those funds, that, you know, we we should, that's that's obviously a a need, so we need to make sure that, I I would much rather make sure we fund it, they, you know, find a you know, um, whoever we're going to sign a contract with, that we move that forward.
I was just thinking of Plan B, if if
And.
the first plan doesn't happen, what's our, what's our pathway choices? You know, what what can we do? That's all.
The only other comment, uh, uh, you know, that I would make um in regards to this is um you know, this plan, you know, as laid out, you know, the funding is laid out, that obviously we are funding a little differently, and I agree, we had said the coordinator was a one-time, you know, was we funded it with one-time funds last year, so we knew that was definitely going to be a possibility, that we wouldn't be able to continue. Uh, I would like, I know we had regular reports um regarding DEI during the year, I think we'll need need that to continue with very specific details on some of the questions um Dr. Weisberg brought up as far as like, uh, who are the leads, you know, how are they selected? What's happening with them, you know, where are we, you know, what uh what what PD is going on besides the um facing history? Um, you know, some of the things that, you know, Dr. Pramo talked about last, uh, the last meeting, uh, I think we need to if if we are kind of changing, I don't want to say changing direction, but, you know, changing how we are moving forward. And we want it to be significant, then we need to know uh, even on a month-to-month basis, you know, what what is happening is that we can, you know, uh, evaluate fairly, is this model working uh any better?
Yeah.
That that's, you know, um, you know, that's the idea, so, uh, that's what I would ask for.
One hundred question add, so at the end, you, uh, and by the way, this is not about hiring or this individual. It's about all the, all the job duties are are listed here. I love the last one, do you work to side-based leads and administration as needed? Well, there will be a need. And if we're basing this again on budget, some people might take away the need part of it, saying, well, we don't have budget for it. So are we putting a price on need here? And that's my other concern. I understand we have budgetary issues, but at the same time, I understand that that this is something that in order for it to work, as stated right here, as needed, there will be a need, just to answer your question, who's gonna get gather all that data, Mr. Fritner, you just asked for?
That's not something the consultant did this year, so that's something staff would continue to do. On an ad-needed basis, we analyzed the hours this year, and we estimated that we would budget for four hours per week for thirty-eight weeks. So we have done analysis, we worked very closely with the team to analyze this proposal and this proposed budget for each of these line items. So I just want to reassure you that we have looked at the data, we have had multiple conversations, we've worked with our school staff on this.
But it's still a proposal.
No, it's a, there's a proposal for the board to have.
I understand, but the point I'm making is, again, it's what if there is a need?
There is a need, that's.
No, an increased need, then we reward.
Oh, for this line item? Well, we would start with a consultant, and any consultant agreement, if we came back, and as Ms. Tabbet said, there's new one-time fundings, and we've we've gone through the contract amount, we would make an amendment back to the board.
To increase that.
Yeah.
Budgets are fluid as long as there's money to put behind them, so. Okay. Can we call for the vote, or any more questions, any more comments?
So.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Knappick, did you have anything else?
Nothing more.
Thanks to both of you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, all right, all those in favor, uh, sorry.
We're voting on.
Five C.
Five C, right. Uh, the approval of the second reading of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Burbank Unified School District Local Control Funding Formula and Local Control and Accountability Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries four zero, thank you. Um, five D.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I I move that the Board of Education adopt the twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-three budget, it says twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, but the whole school year budget as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Weisberg, any uh comments, any discussion?
Nope. I mean, I think it's changed since last week, right? Besides what we, what was detailed there, so.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Uh, five E, approval of status of local indicators.
President Tabbet.
You can Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve the status of local indicators. Should I be reading anything else on that?
As.
As met.
Second.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. Discussion or share, Mrs. Casao, are you there?
She's not here.
Dr. Andrews has a short presentation.
Thank you. Oh, it's up on my screen.
So good evening, President Tabbet, Vice President Ferguson, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, members of Cabinet and BUSD Educational Partners. Tonight, I will be presenting our local indicators as being met uh for the California School Dashboard. So our local indicators are information we provide on an annual basis to the state, which is part of the California State Dashboard for Education. If you recall, last year, the state required this to be submitted by two local governing boards months before it had been in the past. This year, we remain on the new timeline, and we are required to include our local indicators on the agenda on the same meeting as the second reading of the LCAP. We will submit the final results of our local indicators to the state this fall to be included in the California State Dashboard and public release of that data at the end of twenty twenty-two. These local indicators assist in measuring the LCFF state priority areas. Districts complete self-review to determine if they have met, not met, or not met for two or more years. Each of these local indicators, as part of these indicators, districts complete a self-reflection in most areas uh with a one-to-five scale ranking, one being an initial phase of beginning or exploring, and five meaning the work is being done, and we are in a phase of maintenance and sustainability. Three areas identified on this slide that we reflect on is the course and the corresponding subject areas listed are are to be focused on the academic standards adopted by the state of California, specifically in our progress towards providing professional development on those standards, curriculum aligned to those standards, and policies or programs to support staff in identifying areas where they can improve instruction. In the board report linked in the agenda, we have listed the actual scores or specific scores for these subject areas. But in general, we are identifying um that BUSD is is in a place of sustainment and maintenance for both English, math, and English language development with mostly fours and fives. We identify as making progress in the subjects of science and history, as we are still in our current cycle of textbooks adoptions, with science and social studies nearing or completing their textbook adoption, and then subsequent revision of district benchmarks to monitor our progress in those subject areas. So you would see maybe um a three or a four in the areas of social studies and science. We want to point out um a a sort of void of data um from the past couple of years to compare to previous years. So at the top of this slide and the next slide, you can see what has occurred in the past year or two as far as our local benchmarks. Um, but the data that is present there is this year's data. Uh, this year for grades K eight, we are comparing beginning of the year data to end-of-year data to measure growth in our students. Uh, we did make one revision to the ELA data, um, K five, as we saw more growth than we initially identified with the conclusion in reporting of all of our end-of-year assessment data. Uh, so you can see that in the slide presented, um, the adjustment there that that we did see a bigger increase than we actually initially anticipated. The next slide is secondary, so again, with secondary, you can see the previous year's practice for this reporting and our current year data uh for math and English in grades six through eight and nine through twelve. An area that um fluctuated for BUSD in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two was the delivery and engagement in professional development. This was the result of staff changes in the fall and also an environment in the spring of twenty twenty-two, which was not really conducive to continuing or distributing new professional development. So in in some sense, we were not able to complete all of our goals because of the pandemic. Uh, in slide seven, you'll see another wrinkle for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as far as parent engagement. Engagement, as many means of including parents remained online, as state, county, and local guidelines made it difficult to engage families in person. However, uh, many of our communities, committees, excuse me, and meetings continued to see high turnouts as the online meetings made it easier for parents to engage and attend from home. So felt good about our parent engagement this year. And then this uh last section, uh, so last year, we were required to report our local indicators prior to the results of our school satisfaction survey being available. So with the new timetable, we adjusted the timing of our school satisfaction survey so that we can include the results of this year in our local indicators at this point in in the summer. So the next two slides cover the commendations and recommendations that came out of analysis of our school climate survey. What you can see from the current slide is that overall, our our respondents, that would be parents, students, and staff uh are satisfied with the quality of education that we provide. Um, and also that the majority of um staff enjoy coming to work, as well as parents feeling welcomed, and that is, for the most part, our schools are a safe place for most of the respondents. And then as far as recommendations that came out of the analysis, um, one recommendation was to consolidate DEI and and engage in long-term planning. Uh, our anti-prevent, anti-bullying prevention, um, prioritizing professional development for all staff regarding mental health, increasing mental health wellness and supports, and then evaluating ways to to continue to create a positive working environment for all staff. So I'd like to share that our indicators for this year will be reported as met, and I would like to take any questions or discussion when it comes to submitting these in the fall.
Thank you for such a clear breakdown.
Um, can we get a copy of that? Because we didn't get a.
It's, it should be right.
Where?
It starts at right, you can take mine, I'll grab it.
Oh, no, I'll grab it later, just.
All right, any discussion? No? Okay. Seeing none, uh, or anything further, thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Yes, let me find out.
All those in favor, please, am I going ahead, okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero, thank you.
President Tabbet, can I ask a quick question? Is there any um space left in the agenda for a public comment?
Well, it's not agendized, but um you, we all have moved things when before, I guess, like, if we wanted to extend it or open it back up, I guess we could.
Well, it looks like we have one person who wants to speak.
Okay.
Okay, um, I don't know where that would go, but I just wanted to ask.
Let's finish by that, and then we'll give.
We're almost done, can you, Destiny, are you okay to wait to the end of the, okay?
I have it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Weisberg.
Yes.
Um, approval of agreement for professional services, special education. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve an agreement between Burbank Unified School District and Star of California LLC, uh, doing businesses, Star of California, ERA Ed, Stepping Stones Group, to provide ESS services not to exceed forty thousand dollars uh per the coding effective June first, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and that the authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR thirty-three fourteen as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. Do we have any questions? Is Miss Cost there, does she have anything she needs to say?
She is not, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Sorry, Matt, it's just hard to tell.
No, it's fine, no, I know, I'm, but if there are questions, I can answer them.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And now we'll reopen public comment for.
Uh, Destiny Heliger.
Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Destiny Heliger, and I'm currently a student at John Bros High School.
Want to talk a little bit, and so people can hear you if you're watching.
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to say that about the recent motion to pass this new budget that has been presented. Um, first, I just want to say that our DEI consultant has been doing a lot of work for this district. She's made a significant impact, and the idea to lower her salary to forty-four thousand dollars is just not going to be sustainable in the future. And you're probably not going to be able to keep this same person in the position, and this is a specific person that we need. And also, um, my family has lived here since two thousand and four. All of my siblings have gone to BUSD schools, and this district has done an especially terrible job at their DEI work. And the one time this district has actually done something good is when they hired Stephanie. The one time that students, and I'm not just talking about myself, I'm talking about most of the black students, the BIPOC students, the um LGBTQ students that I've talked to have ever felt safe at this school was after they spoke to Stephanie. So the idea that her salary is going to be lowered to a non-livable wage is just actually very terrifying to a lot of students. So I understand that our budget is very tight, but I think the safety of our, of the students in this district and of our, of the students in this district and the safety of the culture of our school is significantly more important than any of the other things that we've ever talked about at these board meetings. So even though the budget is tight, we really just need to find the money because that's all we can do for, to keep students safe. Because once, if Stephanie leaves, then there's really nothing that you guys can do to help BIPOC students, all of these teacher leaders. There's nobody at Burrows that is able to do this DEI work. None of your, you have not hired any teachers that are able to conduct DEI work. So once, so if Stephanie were to leave and you had to hire somebody else and all of these teacher leaders, you're not going to have anybody good at Burrows. So just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention in case you wanted to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Destiny. Can.
Yes, if someone would like to respond, just.
I, I would.
Thank you.
Um, Destiny, thank you as always. A couple of clarifying points that, I can't see you, I'm sorry, it's okay, I don't need to see you, but I, as long as you can hear me, we're good. Mom's blocking you, but it's fine. So I want to clarify a few things. We are not, so my hope very much is that Ms. McCoy will stay on in the, in the consultant role. But I want to be clear, we're not asking her to do the same amount of work for less money. That's, it's really important to know that, that would be unacceptable. So it's important to know, we're not trying to, to tell her, do all the things you're doing, but we're just going to pay you like a couple, you know, like twenty thousand, that's, that's not what's happening. Um, the shift is going to be, and I actually think it speaks to something that you said, something that we all know that, that Ms. McCoy is exceptional at is professional development, providing support to students, providing support to teachers, right? Zero question. So the role of consultant, that's going to be her focus. So it's not going to be, and also do these surveys for us, right? Get them out, make sure that people are responding, it's literally going to be, continue building that community of trust with students at any campus. So I think it's, I'm really glad that, I mean, I'm glad whenever you speak, but in this case, I'm really glad because I, I hope that this helps alleviate a little, a little. Your point is well taken about the money, absolutely. But, and I, and again, I really hope Ms. McCoy, uh, stays with us. I know she's also doing, you know, getting her doctorate at SC, so it gives her a little time maybe to balance. But the goal of this is for her to do the phenomenal professional development she has been doing, both with students and with teachers. Because the goal is that with her continued work and expertise, our teacher leaders will gain that skill set. We know that after one year, like, nobody's ready to just fly, like baby bird analogy. So the goal is that she continues to build that sense of safety with you and other students and with other teachers. And again, the goal is for, um, this to strengthen, deepen, and grow. That's why we need, that's the work that she's been doing that's so vital. So the shifting of like the title and the shifting of when you're looking at the funding is because it's a shifting of responsibility. So my hope is, and we've talked about this a little bit, that, that her ability then to focus on professional development will then be even deeper because we won't be asking her to do those additional things that, that she had on her plate this year. So your point is exceptionally well taken. Um, I do think that it is represented, I know looking at this can be, at least for me, I'll speak for myself, really confusing when you're trying to understand like where the money goes and who's doing what. But I actually think, you know, again, if Ms. McCoy continues on, she will be doing the things that you highlighted that were so effective. Um, and then, look, every year, we're going to continue to have this conversation about does the budget serve the purposes we want it to serve? Do we need to go back to the drawing board? So the approval of a budget this year does not mean the budget's going to look the same next year. So continuing these conversations, and to Mr. Fritner's point, also making sure we have data coming back to us to let us know what's working and what's not allows us to then revise what we need to revise. So if we need more or less PD, whatever it might be, and you'll come, I hope, back and keep reporting back to us and letting us know what you need, um, that we can adjust accordingly as we move forward. So please know that that, that that level of student support is not going away, and that we're not trying to ask Ms. McCoy to do more and pay less, that's absolutely not part of this. So again, you have my number, you, please let me know if there's any other questions that you have, but it's super helpful for me to hear you ask those questions, and, and hopefully this is like a little bit, a late, a little bit of your concern. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much for a good meeting, uh, meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-two.